This is the appointed time and we have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Public Accounts Committee, uh, Public Hearing on Report Number Eighty of the Director of Audit, Chapter Five, Maintenance and Improvement of School Premises for Aided Schools. This is the first public hearing here with us today. Secretary for Education, Dr. Chow Yook Lin with her team. They will be here to answer our questions. Any declaration of interest from members regarding this chapter? If there is none, then I will open the floor to the legal consultant to explain, uh, legal provisions regarding this chapter. Regarding Report Number Eighty of the Director of Audit, Chapter Five, Maintenance and Improvement of School Premises for Aided Schools, I will provide some legal information for members' reference. In general, our topic here today is about school premises for aided schools. I would like to draw your attention to, uh, Cap Two Hundred and Seventy Nine, Education Ordinance. For schools, uh, receiving government subvention as set out in codes of aid, there are various topics covered, including responsibility for maintenance and repairs. Importance is drawn to, uh, hygiene facilities, fire installation facilities, and ventilation systems such as air conditioning systems. Members can refer to Cap Two Hundred and Seventy Nine A, Education Regulations. There were regulations in place to regulate facilities related to health and safety, including fire services and hygiene. Their standards are set out in the education regulations. And under Clause Nine Thirty Nine and Forty Three, as well as Forty Four, requirements are imposed. For example, in terms of hygiene facilities, such as the replacement of toilets, the Permanent Secretary for Education has the authority to impose requirements for these hygiene facilities. As for fire services installation, under Clause Thirty Nine, principals of these aided schools have the responsibility to ensure that these fire services installations are functioning properly. On the topic of flagpole repairs, I would like to draw your attention to the National Flag and National Anthem Amendment Ordinance. There, under Section Seven A, regulations or requirements are set out regarding national flag raising ceremony in schools. Our last issue regarding asbestos management plan. I'm sure that you have read the information paper. Under the Air Pollution Control Ordinance, Section Sixty Nine stipulates that in designated premises, including aided primary, secondary, and special schools, they have to engage registered asbestos consultants to conduct investigation. And under the ordinance, it is stipulated that asbestos management plan will have to be conducted in these school premises. This information is for your reference. I hope that it can be of help of help for today's hearing. So now, I'll invite Professor Nelson Lam, Director of Audit. Good morning, Chair. I wish you all good health. Thank you for inviting us to attend the public hearing today. So now I will briefly go through Report Number Eighty of the Director of Audit, Chapter Five, Maintenance and Improvement of School Premises for Aided Schools. First, I would like to express my gratitude to colleagues of the EDB for their full cooperation during the audit. There are five parts in this report. In the first part, an introduction on the background of the audit. The EDB is responsible for the maintenance and repair works of school premises for aided school. Between twenty seventeen eighteen to twenty 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 one, four thousand one hundred and eighty-six major works projects were conducted. Thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-one emergency repair projects were done. They were approved by the EDB. The expenditure was, uh, five billion dollars and one point eight billion dollars respectively. Our findings are published in Part Two to Part Five of the report. Part Two mainly covers the contract management regarding repair and maintenance works. Part Three mainly covers major repairs projects. Part Four, emergency repairs projects. And lastly, Part Five on improvement programs. Regarding the results of the report, we have put forward thirty-six recommendations to the EDB. And I would like to express my gratitude for, uh, to the EDB for the acceptance of the recommendation. Thank you, Professor Lam. Now I will invite Dr. Choi, Secretary for Education, opening remarks. Thank you. Chair, the EDB thanks the Audit Commission for meticulously reviewing the maintenance and improvement of school premises for aided schools. The audit reports looks into the, uh, value for money aspect, and it recognizes the EDB's work and proposed recommendations. Through strengthening existing measures and guidelines or enhancing documentary record, we can more effectively execute the relevant mechanism. The EDB welcomes the Audit Commission's recommendation. In fact, through constant self-review, we strive to continuously improve. One of the improvements facilitate, uh, schools in a submission of customers at a section survey by enhancing our computer systems. This matches one of the Audit Commission's recommendations. As for other suggestions, we are actively following them up so that we can better assist schools in enhancing the teaching and learning environment and ensure students' health and safety. Currently, we have eight hundred and forty-four aided schools in Hong Kong in principle. Uh, schools renting government-built premises or premises built by the school sponsoring bodies for all these aided schools, they have the responsibility to maintain the premises in good condition. Uh, to assist schools in focusing on teaching and learning, the EDB has, through the school premises repair mechanism, engaged professional teams, uh, outside work consultant and contractors to fully support, uh, schools in their school premises, maintenance, and repair projects. Aided schools can utilize the government recurrent subvention for minor works, and they can apply for non-current subvention for, uh, larger-scale works. In twenty twenty-two to twenty-three financial year, the EDB has spent two-point-five billion dollars on regular school maintenance and repair works in, uh, from the non, from non recurrent subvention, covering, uh, works of different scale, uh, about ten thousand works projects. To ensure that public funds are properly used, the government uses the ASDs systems and repair maintenance system to set up a professional-based mechanism to, uh, allocate resources in a systematic and fair manner and to monitor and implement the school repairs projects for aided schools. For repair project applications submitted by schools, the government will, the EDB will prioritize, uh, the, these projects based on their urgency. So emergency repair items will be followed up immediately. As for non-emergency items, they will be handled according to the annual major repairs mechanism. All of the projects rated essential repair works will be granted, and for general repairs and improvement, uh, programs, they will be approved based on their nature, emergency, and other situation. Other than regular, uh, maintenance and repair works, the EDB also, uh, wrote out dedicated improvement works program according to need, such as the Matchbox Style Schools Improvement Project, the Installation Lifts for Public School, and installation of air conditioning systems. This audit review, the works conducted between twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, the rev, uh, the report expresses concern on the delay of works contract. During the audit period, the COVID-nineteen pandemic was raging and affecting the daily operation of schools, and this also affects the maintenance and repair of school premises. Schools have been, uh, closed intermittently. Government officials, consultants, and contractors could not enter school premises to conduct works. And with, uh, isolation regulations in place, there was a shortage in works. Manpower for individual month school premises, regular maintenance and repair works, and their monetary work has been affected by the, uh, pandemic. During the pandemic, the teams, however, have strived to maintain all necessary emergency repair works. And we have also wrote out dedicated improvement works, including installing tap, water taps with automatic sensors and enhancing ventilation system. With the pandemic ease, and we have stepped up our efforts and to catch up with the progress, we have completed, uh, part of the work. As for the installation of flagpoles, I would like to stress three points. First, all schools are in compliance with the National Flag and National Anthem Amendment Ordinance and Circular Eleven Stroke Twenty Twenty-One promulgated by the EDB in October twenty twenty-one. Second, if the flagpoles are damaged and cannot be operated, we will handle them immediately. And third, as always, we will try to assist schools in installing flagpoles, uh, as far as possible. In fact, all newly built school premises already are equipped with three flagpoles. However, for some school premises built based on old standards, due to environmental constraints, they do not have flagpoles or that they are not in ideal positions, such as they are on top of the building or places where the flags cannot be, uh, raised easily. We constantly encourage schools to, uh, construct extra flagpoles or to change their position to improve the situation. In the past three years, the EDB has built two hundred and ninety-three flagpoles for the one hundred and eighteen of our said schools, and the review has mentioned forty-one schools, in which forty of them already are equipped with one flagpole. Uh, one of them, after research, we could not identify suitable location to install a flagpole. In addition, regarding the progress of removing asbestos material, we place great importance in this regard. The EDB has rolled out a time-limited school asbestos management program in two thousand and six. According to methods approved by the EPD, we engage professionals to remove all structural elements containing asbestos. For five hundred and seventy schools all over Hong Kong, the removal has been complete. However, for individual schools, there are some remaining asbestos-containing material hidden under the floor, and removal works will interrupt the school's operation. After professional assessment, we decided that, uh, they would not cause risk to school users. The school chose to wait for the conduct of a large, of a major repair projects to remove the asbestos. In the past few years, according to EPD guidelines, the EDB has been in close relation with these schools and engaged professionals for these schools to closely monitor and handle all asbestos-containing, uh, building structure to prevent them from, uh, being exposed. In February, we have conducted the latest supervision to ensure its safety. Uh, we will urge these schools to submit their application within the first round of, uh, the new round of, uh, major repair works to remove the asbestos-containing material as soon as possible. Chair, the EDB will continue to utilize resources to provide a healthier and better, uh, campus environment for students. I look forward to answering members' questions. Thank you. Today, Mr. Lewis Long will be the member responsible to lead the, uh, Q and A session, so I will allot twenty minutes for him and for other members fifteen minutes each. Mr. Long, thank you, Chair. Since the first part is the introduction, I would like the administration to clarify, uh, details regarding establishment and repairs arrangement. In paragraph one point two A, there are one hundred and forty-one, uh, in the establishment of the school maintenance, school premises maintenance section. And in the lower right corner of the organization chart of the school premises maintenance section, there are sixty-eight resident staff employed by term consultants and maintenance term contractors. On the fifteenth of May, the Secretary for Education has submitted a document to us. In paragraph five, it has mentioned that there are sixty-nine civil servants positions, and the work strength was sixty-six as of fifth of May twenty twenty-three. In Annex One of the paper, in the pa, uh, in the table at the bottom, we can see that there are sixty-three resident site staff employed by term consultants and maintenance term contractors. I have two questions. First, these residential site staff employed by term consultants and maintenance term contractors, they are not employed by the EDB. Is that correct? Can you clarify that if these sixty-six staff members are included in the staff establishment of the school premises maintenance section? If yes, what are their job duties? And in paragraph one point two A three, the duties of the S P M S is to oversee and manage consultants and contractors, that is, the term consultants, T C, and maintenance term contractors, M T C, is appointed for implementing maintenance and improvement works. So will there be a conflict of interest or, uh, conflict of roles? Thank you.
Mr. Lu referred to a paper. I think he's referring to R eighty slash five slash Gen One. Secretary, Mr. Chairman, in relation to manpower issues, I would like to refer to the Permanent Secretary for Education. Yes, please, Ms. Michelle Lee. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, the member, for his question. I need to clarify, we've got sixty-nine civil service posts under the school premises maintenance section. Just now, the member asked about the site staff employed by term consultants and maintenance term contractors. They are not occupying civil service posts. Um, they are needed whenever, uh, work orders arise. We can assure you that there's no, uh, conflict of interests. Mr. Lu, in other words, the contract staff are not actually your own staff. No. What about the division of labor? Is it clear? Um, I want to know whether they have access to your internal documents. That's my concern. Ms. Lee, let me supplement. It's clear that they have got different roles. For the contract staff, like the consultants, as well as the contractors, they carry out their duties in accordance with the contracts. Their duties are clearly set out in the contracts, and there's a clear division of labor. For the EDB, we are mainly exercising the supervision role in relation to the consultants, as well as the contractors, and we have a clear, uh, workflow of duties. There's no conflict at all. Mr. Lu, what about my second question? I'm coming to it. Please go to paragraph one point three A. It is said that since the first of April twenty fourteen, the Housing Department has ceased to be works agents of EDB on the implementation of approved repair projects for estate-aided schools. And then, by the first of April twenty nineteen, there was a change, and the EDB took over. And then for the non-estate-aided schools, the EDB took up the implementation of approved repair projects with estimated cost exceeding two million dollars each from the ASD. In other words, when it comes to the maintenance of school premises between twenty fourteen and twenty nineteen, there has been an increase in the workload. In other words, my question is, as far as the school premises maintenance section is concerned, uh, between twenty fourteen and twenty nineteen, was there an increase in manpower in light of the increase in workload? Was there an increase in resources as well? P S, thank you, Chair. Regarding the number of civil service posts, we do, um, increase the number appropriately in accordance with the demand as well as the workload. In the nineteen eighties and up to, uh, the early two thousand, in relation to the division of labor among government departments, we always carried out a review. The EDB took over part of the work carried out by the ASD, as well as the Housing Department. And as a result, there was a change in relation to the level of manpower accordingly. Mr. Lu, I want to know whether you were satisfied that the increase in manpower is able to cope with the increase in workload, right? Uh, Ms. Lee, please. Let me call upon you first before you answer. Well, whenever there is an inadequacy, then we will continue to fight for resources centrally. Well, all in all, there was an increase, and basically were able to cope. Thank you, Chair. Ms. Lu. Chair? And that takes me to paragraph one point two B. It is said that regional education officers are responsible for screening major repairs applications and providing comments on emergency repair applications, each costing two-hundred-thousand dollars or more. For Note Three, it mentions that the REOs coordinate with other, uh, EDB sections to provide a full range of professional support services to schools. It is therefore not feasible to provide a breakdown of staff resources solely for the work on provision of support for maintenance improvement of school premises. And then please take a look of Table Two. Between twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, that is the financial years I mentioned, for the number of M R projects approved, we always get a figure of eight hundred plus. In other words, on average, each aided school got one M R project. My question for the EDB is, in the face of the large number of M R, uh, applications, did the EDB assess whether the four REOs, as far as school maintenance and repair was concerned, they got sufficient manpower resources? I think you know, my starting point is that I'm worried about the lack of manpower, so please provide more information. Yes, P S, Ms. Lee, or Dr. Choi? Thank you, Ms. Lu, for your concern about our manpower levels. As far as the REOs are concerned, the colleagues indeed have to cover different areas of work, well, in relation to schools. Well, here we are talking about E R applications, each costing two-hundred-thousand dollars or more, as well as M R applications. They don't look at the applications from the engineering aspect, rather, they will look at the needs of the schools. They take an initial view of the applications from schools, so it won't take up too much of their time. Mr. Lu, thank you, Chair. The last question for this section, I think we are, uh, fine as far as time management is concerned. Page three in the Chinese version says out the six regions, or the six contracts. And then, um, when you read the paper sent by the EDB on the fifteenth of May, and in fact, the Chair, Connie, told us about the reference, that is, R eighty slash five slash Gen One. Please go to Annex Two. Annex Two says out the six contract areas, as well as the numbers of schools covered by each, ranging from hundred and twenty all the way up to hundred and sixty. And then for, uh, REO one and REO two, there were fewer, uh, schools. And then for REO five, um, there were more, uh, schools. I mean, the fifth, uh, contract area. Now, my question is, for the six contract areas, please tell us the criteria about, uh, dividing these schools, um, or spreading to schools among the contracts, uh, areas. And then, how did you group the contract areas into three, um, maintenance contracts? And then my final point is that for the six, uh, contracts, for the six maintenance term contracts, they are assigned to three different, um, contractors, right? Uh, what is the criteria? Secretary, yes, if I may talk about the, um, contracts, uh, and how they were sort of, uh, drawn up. Well, we looked at the proximity of the areas, and then we'll try to see that, uh, the number of works projects will be more or less the same. There's the broad principle we adopt in, um, grouping the schools. And of course, sometimes it depends on the complexity of the nature of the repairs. Some school premises are more worn and torn. That's the basic principle. As to why we have got three, um, term consultancies, uh, I would like to defer to Ms. Lee. Ms. Lee, thank you for your question. Well, put in simple terms, what we want to achieve is that we hope that there will be more contractors taking part. We don't have one single contract covering all the areas. Well, um, we would like to have competition from among the contractors in the market, which is also good for, um, spreading the risks. As the secretary has said currently, as far as we, um, are talking about the contract areas, for the first contract, we cover the Hong Kong Island. And then for new territories east and new territories north, we try to have a different grouping. Well, the question now is that we'll try to look at the number of school premises in the contract area, and we hope that it will, uh, be better for our supervision work. The question also asked about, um, the fact that we have got six contract areas and three contracts. Well, um, we'll try to be flexible. We try to sort of, uh, divide them into three regions, and it has been set out clearly in the paper. So we'll try to be flexible in the deployment of manpower, and we'll continue to review the matter. Ms. Lu, in other words, uh, it is good to be flexible in relation to manpower deployment. Let me come to another question, and this in relation to the introduction. The introduction chapter of the Director of Audit's report. I'd like to go to Table One. This is really for my, um, I need to clarify one point. We have got six contract areas, and they've been grouped into three different agreements, A, B, and C. So we have got the term consultancy agreements, A, B, and C. And then for the maintenance term contracts, we have got six of them, ranging from Contract One to Contract Six. Now, my question is, take Contracts One and Two as an example. I want to know whether both of them have been awarded to the same contractor. And then for the corresponding term consultancy agreement A, do I take it that one term consultant will take care of the two contracts? Ms. Lee, indeed. For the term consultancy agreement A, it covers two contract areas. And basically, two maintenance term contractors will take care of the two contracts, and then the consultants, uh, under Agreement A will supervise the two areas. The same is true for the other two agreements. For the M T C one and two, I want to know whether both of them have been awarded to the same contractor. No, certainly not. In other words, for there are six different contractors. there are six different contractors, right? Well, let me put it in this way. For contractor one and contractor two, they are different. Contractor three and contractor four are different. Contractor five and contractor six are different. But then for all the contracts, uh we did, we carry out um centralized procurement. In other words, under TCA, B, and C, the two contracts under each agreement won't be taken up by the same contractor. But it is possible that the same contractor may be working under different agreements. There is agreement A, B, and C. And contracts have been awarded um to them uh in a fair and open procurement exercise.
Mr. Luen, Chair? I have seeked the clarifications that I need for this part. I have questions in the uh following parts, so that's all from me for now. Well, I would like to seek some clarification. In page three of the Chinese version, in table one, there is a note one underneath it. Term consultancy agreements A, B, and C were awarded to three TCs. Maintenance term contracts one and five, they are grouped together, two and four, and three and six, were respectively awarded to three MTCs. So I would like to clarify this. So we are talking about two different things, the term consultancy agreements and the maintenance term contracts. For term consultancy agreements, there are three of them, A, B, and C. For A, it covers two contract areas. And for B, they covers uh three and four, and for C, they covers five and six. But when it comes to maintenance term contract, they are not allocated according to ABC, right? According to note one, MTC one and five are grouped together. So that means that for contractor A, they are responsible for central and western, Wan Chai, Hong Kong East and Southern, and uh Kun Tong, Saikong, and Wantai Sein, is that correct? That's correct. Mr. Luen, anything to add? No, I have got the answer that I want. I would like to uh have a bit of a follow up here. Just then, Dr. Choi said that the contracts are awarded based on their regions. But according to the contract areas, you can see that the central and western, Wan Chai, east, uh Hong Kong East and Southern, and it is grouped together with Kun Tong, Saikong, and Wantai Sein. So you can see that the contracts are uh grouped in areas in Hong Kong Island and Kowloon. One and five, two and four, and three and six. And in annex two, in the supplementary paper provided, I can see that the numbers of schools are not distributed evenly. For one and five, there were two hundred and seventy-four schools in total. For two and four, in total, there are two hundred and sixty-five schools. For three and six, uh it amounts to some three hundred schools. So the proportion is different. Do you have any special consideration? Will a certain contractor take on a heavier role than the other contractors? I would like to add that other than looking at the number of schools, for certain areas, the works there are more complex. Let's take schools in, on the Hong Kong Island as an example. Some schools were built earlier and they may require more maintenance and repair works. In the division of labor, we try to distribute the works evenly. We consider the proximity of locations and the number of works. Thank you. All right, members? Regarding introduction, do you have any questions? Deputy Chair? Chair, I've some minor questions. I've been trying to look for this answer in the report, but so far I could not find it. So perhaps you can clarify it for me. I don't think that in her opening remarks, she has uh grabs the important points pointed out in the report. The audit report reviews works undertaken between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, but the secretary has not addressed any issues relating to the delay. In her opening remarks, she said that during the pandemic, uh schools were intermittently closed and uh work staff could not access the schools. I think we all understand that. But in the report, it doesn't seem that this topic was covered. So I wonder if you have any types of communication regarding the delayed during the pandemic from the perspective of an audit? I would like to see if you have already struck a balance between the pandemic situation and uh the audit perspective. Director of Audit, I will invite uh Assistant Director of Audit, Mr. Peng, to explain on the operational details. Thank you for your question. During pandemic, the overall operation of Hong Kong has been hindered. And during the period of the audit, we were fully aware of the situation, and the EDB has handed over details in this regard as well. In the report, we did not go into detailed analysis of whether the impacts were caused by the pandemic. We did not have this information. So we could not say for certain how many days were delayed because of the pandemic or because of school closure. That is why we could not do any analysis in this regard. Chair? I did not ask for detailed analysis. I did not ask for percentage or number of days delayed, et cetera. That's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is that in the executive summary, the delay due to the pandemic was not mentioned at all. For um TA and TAA and QAA, it seems that the report did not cover on the possible delays within this period or the fact that the EDB may have expressed difficulties faced during the pandemic. For many reports submitted, they were delayed for quite a long period of time. If they could not enter schools, of course, they could not complete the works on time. But they also did not submit reports on time as well, so I wonder why that is. Thank you, Chair. From the audit's perspective, we are looking at hard figures because we are following international standards. Delay reasons have to be set out clearly in documentary evidence. I've explained this in past public hearings. We cannot include what's not provided in documentary form. If we look at some of the dates in the report, there may not be dates where the pandemic was raging, but we could not include this detail in the report because we need to have documentary proof. Thank you. Deputy Chair? So should the uh number of positive cases or deaths of COVID be included in the report as well? If you are asking for documentary proof? Because in the secretary's speech in paragraph six, does that make sense? Of course, on one hand, we have to look at the works that you have already completed. But on the other hand, all of us are aware of what happened within those two years. We all know that schools were forced to close during those two years. You said that you don't have the number of cases delayed because of the pandemic, but you need to at least make some reference to it. Ten years from now, if I refer to this report, then I will say, how come the delay was so serious? If you believe that school closure has contributed to these delays, then why pick this topic for your audit? Because the situation is very different with or without the pandemic. This is simply an an objective fact that there was a pandemic. Have you mentioned this in any of the paragraphs and that you understand the EDB's difficulty in the pandemic? If not, then why compile this report at all? You're wasting our time. Director? Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Deputy Chair. I would like to explain the procedures of compiling the report. During the compilation, we have contacted the EDB for at least two times to uh seek their response in both Chinese and English version. In the EDB's opening remark, uh that is the speech by Dr. Choi. I heard it for the first time here. As for whether we have included the pandemic situation in our report, if you refer to page twenty two, paragraph two point one, uh two point eighteen A, page twenty-five in the English version. As for the statement made by the deputy chair about the fact that we should not conduct audits on this area because of the pandemic, well, I have some reservation. Because since the government uh has continued with this operation, our audit and the monitoring process should continue as well. We could see that for the repair projects or maintenance projects conducted during this area, they have quality issues and they may not be related to the pandemic. Chair? My apologies. Uh perhaps I was being too harsh. I've overlooked the mention of the pandemic in paragraph two point eighteen A. But just then the director said that he has heard uh what the doctor, what Dr. Choi said for, in the opening remarks for the first time, well, that is simply incorrect. Perhaps you need to uh apologize to the secretary. Director, anything to add? Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Deputy Chair. In paragraph two point eighteen, it is a targeted response from the EDB. Not everything mentioned in the report or every issues were uh was a result of the pandemic, so it is only an overall reply. Well, it is not a general reply, but to certain extent, at least you have mentioned this in the report, even though it may only be a specific reply to a specific issue. Just then you said that you have heard what Dr. Choi said for the first time regarding uh the pandemic's impact on the overall works progress. Is that an exaggeration? I didn't say that Dr. Choi was exaggerating the situation. Perhaps I didn't express myself clearly. I'm sure that we all feel the impact of the pandemic. I can see some of the colleagues here are still wearing face masks and many have been infected once or maybe even twice. In all of Hong Kong, in the civil service, and in the audit commission, we all felt the impact. Even though we did not mention this fact in the report, it doesn't mean that it does not play a role. As civil servants and as the audit commission, we try our best to serve the community. I'm sure that the secretary feels the same. What is being proposed today reflects the overall situation better. But in the compilation of the reports, the Secretary for Education has made her response. And her response was, in paragraph two point eighteen, which is different from the, from what she said today. I don't think it is as exaggerated as what the deputy chair suggested. I believe that this is an important factor to consider for delay in terms of number of projects completed or quality of the projects. Are they justified? But the director insists that he has only heard this argument today in the secretary's opening remarks about the fact that the pandemic affecting the overall quality of works done. If I go through it in detail, can see that it is an overall response. I'm not the member in charge, so I did not really scrutinize every word. But I feel that this detail should be clarified because it will affect the reliability of the whole report. The audit commission and this committee has the responsibility to oversee the value for money performance of various departments and bureaus. But we cannot oversee, uh we cannot overlook the situation. I understand that you said you follow international standards. I'm an accountant myself, where I'm trained in this field. I think that it should be included so that the report is not biased. We shouldn't just look at cold figures and criticize departments for not doing well or for lack of communication instead of focusing on the important issue. This is not what the order commish- commission should be doing, and they should not be wasting their time in this matter. Uh lately, uh the public has been concerned about uh public, public library collection, et cetera. And we all know these uh issues. I don't think we should spend time on uh these works delay, et cetera. Um I apologize if I may, if I sound too harsh. But the reply that you have just given was not well thought, and that has made me furious because it seems to me that you have uh pointed the finger at the secretary. I hope that you, if you have uh wrongly accused the secretary, I hope that you are a gentleman enough to apologize.
Well, I referred to uh paragraph two point one H A. That's for part two. In theory, we haven't yet embarked upon part two. Well, in fact, if you go back to uh part one, there was a response from the EDB. So just now I made my remark uh on the basis of uh part one. Um another point that I need to clarify is that um, well, in fact, it wasn't us that decided on this topic. It was the PAC that decided to pick this chapter for a hearing. Uh as to whether it is appropriate to pick this chapter, I don't think it is right uh for you to query us and why certain words are not, are included or not included in the report. Yes, uh it's our mistake. I know your stance. I will be very careful, careful in future. Uh we'll try to see if you are merely presenting cold figures to us and whether you have added and whether you have added a human touch to your work. No other follow up questions, right? Okay, Mister Loon, I think we can I suppose we'll finish with the introduction chapter. If there are no other points, then we can move on to chapter two. Or part two rather, sorry. Part two, contract management. Paragraph two point two of the report, it is said that for E R and M R works orders before their completion, the E D B conducts comprehensive site checks, C S Cs. Question for the E D B for such comprehensive site checks, C S Cs. Want to know whether they are taken up by the school premises maintenance um section and who were responsible and how many of them? Secretary. Mister Philip Hall can take this question. Mister Hall, please. Thank you Chair. Mister Loon just now asked, in relation to the comprehensive site checks, there are two parts to it. First of all, we have the um building services and we have also got builders' works. And we have got different people for uh building services and builders' works. Uh work supervisors and their assistants will be taking up the building services. For builders' works, we have the um building services inspectors and their assistants. In relation to the number of staff uh involved, uh as set out in part one, uh we have got different contracts covering different contract areas and therefore we have got a different number of staff members taking, carrying out the work. Well, if you are not able to give me the number of people involved, can you do so after the hearing? I'm interested in the number of people deployed for the two different groups of C S C um supervision, Mister Hall. In relation to building services, especially builders' works, well, the supervisor won't be uh carrying out C S Cs only. Say for example, for comprehensive such checks, they are to be carried out before their completion. Uh and in fact, there are also other audits as well. So um we can give you information later in relation to the number of people responsible for the two kinds of work. As to how many of them are wholly dedicated and solely dedicated to this work, I'm afraid we haven't got the information. Mister Loon, I look forward to getting the information from you. Another question is in relation to paragraph two point three A, it is said that the E D B has divided the schools into six subregions for C S Cs on building services and seven subregions for C S Cs on builders' works. Let's take a look of paper issued on the fifteenth, it is said that um for the C S Cs, there are six and seven subregions. Um well, for the builders' works, we have got Saikong and Tai Po forming the seventh uh subregion. I don't quite understand why this is so. So I want to know why for the surface subregion, um you are talking about works carried out by two different contractors. Now, my another question is that you have got two different categorization or classification criteria. Would that affect the work of the um M T Cs? Mister Hall, yes, please. Thank you Chair, thank you member for his questions. Indeed, for our reply, uh dated the fifteenth of May, if you go to annex four, um we have got the uh contract areas, especially the subregions. If you look at those shaded gray, we have separated um the contract areas from the subregions five and six so that they become five, six and seven uh in the builders' works uh subregions. I think that's for the division of labor for civil servants and then it has got nothing to do with the M T Cs. In other words, if we go back to the six subregions in the building services works, we are talking about six different contracts. Contract five and contract six are taken up by different contractors. When we carry out the um C S Cs, it doesn't matter which contractor is involved. So when we randomly check the schools in subregion five as well as subregion six, it doesn't matter because it has nothing to do with which contractor is involved. So it's a matter of division of labor among our own staff. Mister Loon. And then for annex four, for the building services works, that is the table in the top part, there's this subregions arrangement for B S Ws. We have um subregions five and six, but then for builders' works, we have got seven subregions, five, six and seven. Just now your explanation was that it merely reflects your internal arrangements for spot checking. For subregions five and six in the first table, as well as the subregions five, six and seven in the second table on the same page, I want to know whether we got the same contractors. In other words, you don't have a separate contractor for uh building surface works and another one for builders' works. As long as they are in the same subregion, it will be the same contractor, right? The member's understanding is correct. For contractors, you can go to table one of the uh Director of Audits report. We have got this six different contracts. Mister Loon, paragraph two point three A mentions that the E D B in accordance with the guidelines for spot checks, conduct C S Cs for specified number of works orders of building services and builders' works every month for each subregion. Now, my question for the E D B, for your guidelines, I want to know about the criteria in the guidelines as to the number of um works orders to be checked. That's the first point. Second point, um how can you tell the number to be checked is about right? And then another point is that for the E Rs, as well as the M Rs, I want to know whether you specify the ratio between the two. My fourth point is for the M Rs, major repairs, usually they are carried out during the school summer holidays. In other words, sometime between May, uh July and August, that would be the peak season for their uh work. I want to know whether your uh section, that is your school premises maintenance section has got sufficient manpower to carry out all the C S Cs. In other words, for the C S Cs, they will be carried out in the light of the progress of the works orders. So how are you going to deploy your manpower to cope with the peak period uh of the works as well as times when the level of work is lower? Mister Hall. Uh that's more about operational matters. Sorry, the Deputy Chair has a point of order. Sorry to interrupt. Of course, Mister Loon is new to the P A C. I just want to have a word of reminder. Maybe I'm, it is not right for me to say this. And then um P C is different from panel, um panels or committees. There are questions that don't need to be asked in such a fashion. It is not quite good for questions to be asked um in the way that he did. There is too many questions asked at the same time. Maybe the Chair can be invited to consider this. You can stop him um in the appropriate juncture. If you ask too many questions, I don't think the officials can answer the questions. Just like when we are in a court, uh we're here uh taking evidence, so maybe we should um sort of ask fewer questions at any one time. I would like to thank the Deputy Chair for his reminder.
My goal was to list all of my questions so that the administration can provide a more comprehensive answer, but you are right. I can ask my questions one by one. But that may take up more time. Thank you, Mister Loon. Mister Hall will take the question, right? Thank you Chair. Perhaps I'll answer your questions this way. For C S C comprehensive site checks, we have two purposes. First, we want to check the works quality of the uh contractors. So this has to be done before the completion of works. One example is the works on flat poles. After con- uh before concrete is laid, we need to check the works quality. This is the case for both M R and E R projects. We do not have the any uh hard ratio between M R and E R projects. But the guidelines are applicable to work orders that are not yet completed. There are uh possibly many work orders involved in a works project. So before the works order is completed, this C S C will need to be conducted. As for the number of checks conducted, for seven subregions in builders' works, the number is, the number of checks required is twenty since there are fewer number of schools. But for building services works, the target number to reach is thirty checks, since there are more schools. As for how we identify the works to be checked, well, our colleagues will go through the uh works orders that are not yet completed. And they will see uh which works has more uh priority or importance. For example, uh there may be water leakage from a pedestal toilet, then that may not require C S C. But there may be other works, let's say, involving uh the waterproofing layer on the roof, then that is more important, then we need to conduct C S C before works are completed. The member has also asked about manpower and like the Secretary said, we do have enough manpower at the moment. Mister Loon. So when choosing which works to uh conduct checks on, do you receive any input from the contractors or do you pick them uh 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 was there any input by the consultants? Or do you uh choose these works to check, will we choose them with our uh professional judgment? Mister Loon. Paragraph two point three A one and A two. The wording choo- uh chosen by the Director of Audit is that required in one month, two months and three months. When I see these words, I was quite confused. So I would like to know, which months are you referring to? Since there are words like in one month, in some months and in three months. So I wonder why there is such a difference in word choice. As we said, there are more works to be conducted during summer vacation. So I wonder if that affects the choice of words in one month, two months and two months. Director of Audit, I'll invite the Assistant Director to take your question. Thank you Chair, thank you member for your question. I'll perhaps first explain what one month, two months and three months mean. If we refer to page nine of the Chinese version. Two point three. The C S Cs to be conducted in the twenty one month period. In two point three eight two, first bullet for one subregion, the number of works order checked was less than required in one month. As for second bullet for one sub- uh subregion, the number of work orders checked were less than required in two months. Then third bullet for the remaining three subregions, the numbers of works orders checked were less than required in three months. Well, Chair, I understand what it means. But I would like to know the reason for the number of works orders checked was less than required, was it because of a delay due to the pandemic? A a delay due to the peak season of summer vacation because like what Deputy Chair said, there are more works to be conducted in the summer holiday, so I would like to have a better understanding of this. Well, I think what the, what Mister Loon was asking was that whether or not you can give us the specific month. Because then we can decide for ourselves whether the pandemic situation was severe during that time. Mister Peng, thank you. As we said earlier, in our findings, we found that the number of work orders checked was less than the requirement. So in two point eighteen, we were talking about the comprehensive site checks. And according to the administration, the number of works order checks were less than required because of the pandemic. We do have the actual months on our hand, but I have to look into it because there is, uh a lot of data is involved. But according to the response from the E D B on page twenty five, paragraph two point eighteen, it was indeed due to the pandemic. I hope that you can supply this information. This can assist us in understanding the content. Please, just a moment, Mister Loon. Permanent Secretary, do you have anything to add? Or Doctor Choi? Thank you Chair. In certain months, let's say in February twenty twenty two, it was the peak of the pandemic. That is the three consecutive months mentioned. The other period is the April of, is in April of twenty twenty one, also a peak period during the pandemic. During the whole period, a total of four hundred and two days uh were, uh four hundred and two school days were suspended for face to face learning. Chair, in paragraph two point three C, it is mentioned that of the eight thousand six hundred and one C S Cs, two thousand six hundred and sixty six, that is thirty one percent, were conducted after the completion of the works. However, in the report, it is not mentioned the period of works or the time taken is not mentioned. If the works period only lasts for a few days, then it is very difficult to conduct checks. On the other hand, if it is the works period is the works period is rather long, then there will be more time to conduct CSC, let's say, a week or so. So I wonder if you have analyzed the works period of these works? Secretary? I'll see if my colleagues have the figures on hand. Mr. Ha, thank you, Chair. When our colleagues choose which works to inspect, they will exercise their professional judgment and they will not opt for works period that are rather short, let's say, one to two days. And if works can be completed within a short period of time, that means they are of a simpler nature and do not require comprehensive site checks. Mr. Lung. So the conclusion is that for works that require CSCs, the works period is relatively long. They will not, the CSC will not be conducted after the completion of the works because the work period is short. Is that correct? Mr. Ha? Yes, that is correct. Well, for of the nine thousand six hundred and one CSCs, two hundred, uh, two thousand six hundred and sixty-six, that is one-third of the cases, were conducted after the completion of the works. Just by looking at the numbers, it is very puzzling because the CSC should be conducted in the duration of the works. What is there to be checked when works are completed already? From what Mr. Ha said, if it only takes two days to complete the works, CSC will not be conducted for this type of works. Has this message been relayed to the audit commission? Since certain types of works only take a few days to complete, and thirty-one percent of these cases were conducted after the completion of the works. Have you been, have you relayed this message to the audit commission? Mr. Ha, thank you, Chair. Of course, the audit commission is aware of the situation. But I would like to clarify that in this paragraph, the focus is that out of the works identified for CSC, whether or not we could complete the CSC before the completion of the works, that is what the figure shows. But if we go back to the source of the problem, why were these works projects identified for CSC? They were based on professional judgment of our colleagues. We do not select works projects that spend only a few days. We choose works of certain scale and importance to checks. So that means out of the eight thousand six hundred and one checks, you identify these projects yourselves, right? And two thousand and six hundred sixty-six of them were conducted after the completion of the works. So based on what you said, you identify works that spend a longer period of time. Then how come they did not conduct CSC on time before works are completed? Can you explain?
Mr. Ha, yes, I need to explain why we have got this phenomenon. It is not because we have chosen um works that are very brief in terms of duration and therefore we can't carry out the CSC before they are completed. We have picked certain works for CSCs, but at the end of the day, they are found to have been completed. It is mainly because for all works where they carried out by contractors and for the consultant to check the quality of the contractor, to confirm whether it has been completed. All such must be documented in the computer system. For our staff to pick a piece of work for CSC, according to the computer system, it is said that it is not yet completed, and that's why it was chosen. But then when we arrive at the scene, it may, what happens is that maybe the works has been com- have been completed, but then the contractor or consultant has not yet um entered the information. Maybe the consultant has confirmed the completion, but then consultant hasn't uh recorded the completion. And therefore, this effect is unknown to our staff members. We only discover this only upon arrival at the scene. And in fact, in the audit's report, there has been a recommendation for us, that is, we should enhance our computer system to avoid this from happening. Well, according to you, um, it is only when your colleague arrives at the scene, then he finds that the work has been completed. But um it is a matter of public money. It is a matter of judging the value of money. We want to know whether unnecessary work has been carried out. So for the director of audit, what they're saying is that you exercise professional judgment to carry out the CSCs. You must come up with a good system. In particular, for um a piece of work that would only last for a day or two, say, for example, do carrying of work concerning a toilet, it may only last a day. So you can't carry out CSC. But then for waterproofing of the roof, it takes a lot of efforts. You need to level the um slab, and then you have to carry out the waterproofing. And then it is more reasonable to carry out a CSC middle of the course. But then for a uh brief or a simple job which would only last an hour or two, then it's impossible for you to carry out the CSC. So it's better for you to sort out the matter. And then there will be less misunderstanding when the director of audit uh is checking your documents. The P S would like to supplement, P S. Chair, if I may add to the answers. When we select the works orders for the CSCs, basically we'll choose those that have a longer duration and with a greater degree of complexity. Only such should warrant our checking. As to why we are not able to conduct the CSC before completion of the works orders, it is mainly because the consultant may not have updated the record in the computer system in time telling us that the uh uh work has been completed. But then our staff might have chosen this because of the complexity of the nature. But then only upon arrival at the scene, it is found that it has been completed. Now, the audit is only interested in um the time taken for us to complete the CSC. Now, what we want to do now is that for the consultant to update the information, it must be appropriate and timely so that when we pick the works orders, we can be sure that we choose those uh works orders that have not yet been completed. Let me say this once again, for free um short, for short-duration jobs, we don't choose them. Chair, let me say why this happened. Uh, a consultant might have been late in updating the records. And then our colleague um chose such works orders. We do have the um expected date of completion. There are reasons affecting the actual date of completion. Say, for example, this operation of these schools. In fact, they will raise um to uh sort of adjust the date of completion. Our colleague can only get the information from the computer system to find out whether the work has been completed. That's the only information um that he bases his decision on. As I have said, we'll be updating our computer system. And we have also included functions in the computer system so that you cannot set a date which is earlier than the completion date. Now that the P S and the secretary have clarified the issue, uh, you won't be including um works orders that last a day or two. And then for those with a longer duration, you're supposed to check in the um in the interim. Now, you're saying that sometimes the consultant may not have been timely in updating the record. And so when you arrive, you find that it's been completed. I don't quite understand. You're supposed to have a schedule, the number of days taken when you commence the work, et cetera. If they have made changes or if they don't adhere to the timetable, then it's a matter of being, of having a delay. I think it happens all the time, right? As you have said, there is a work plan. And um of course, we were talking about a period of time affected by the pandemic. Schools have holidays and schools have other activities. So there bound to be adjustments to the work plan. Now, we are seeing that on the one hand, we have to remind um the consultants to update the information in a timely fashion. On the other hand, for the date of completion, we should avoid uh having uh the issues that we've referred to. Mr. Lung. I don't want to be labor on this point, but still, very much for my own sake, I want to get a clearer picture. So please go to table six on page fifteen of the English version of the report. It is about the n- number of days of delay. Just now, Mr. Ha and Ms. Li, the P S, tried to explain the matter. I got some ideas, but still, I cannot quite understand the following. As to the number of days um of delay, and seven cases have a delay of more than seven hundred thirty days. And the longest delay was nine hundred sixty-three days, as mentioned in the note. Now, the contractor, the consultant, might not have updated the computer records in a timely way. But still, I won't expect such a long delay. It's almost three years' time. And of course, I am involved in construction and property development. I think a contractor will try to get payment from you upon completion of works. I don't think they will want, they would want to update the record three years afterwards. Does it mean that they are not interested in collecting payment from you? Secretary, we did check the seven cases. And it was found that the wrong form was adopted. They didn't use the CSC forms. Uh, rather, they should not have used the CSC forms. Uh, it is supposed to the normal checking. They wrongly used the CSC, and that's why it was found that there was such a long delay. They were not sup- uh, the seven cases were not supposed to be CSC cases, that's why. Ms. Lung, all right? Chair, if I may, move to paragraph two point eight, all the way up to paragraph two point eleven. This is about the QAAs carried out by the EDB, that is, the Quality Assurance Orders. In paragraph nine of the paper dated the fifteenth of May, it is said that Quality Assurance Orders are comprehensive checks on completed projects. The auditors would obtain all related information from project approval to project completion, including but not limited to information about project application, approval for orders, project reports, et cetera, to examine if the selected project was delivered in accordance with the prevailing procedures. Now, for QAAs to be carried out, I want to know how much time do you need to complete such an audit? Mr. Ha? Mr. Ha? Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the member for his question. If I may mention that for the QAAs, we don't need to go to the work site on school premises. Uh, the TAA's are about the quality of the works. For QAAs, it is a matter of paperwork. We'll try to look at the commencement of the exercise, tendering workflow, communication with schools, everything. So we'll try to cover. Well, it takes us a week or so to complete such a QAA. Ms. Lung, for the QAA, it means that it is a paper trail audit, am I right? Mr. Ha? Indeed. Ms. Lung, please. Paragraph two point twelve. According to the maintenance term contracts, MTCs are required to submit a dimension book for each works order to TCs within ninety days after the certified completion date of the works order. In paragraph two point thirteen, it is said that for the delay, the submission of dimension books figures are given. My question is, for the dimension books, I want to know about the procedures involved in the submission. Are we talking about the submission of a hard copy of the book? Or are we talking about electronic copies? No other members would like to ask questions, then I'll give the floor to Ms. Lung to continue with his questions. But then I just saw um Mr. Emin Wong raising his hand, so I will give the floor to Mr. Wong after um the answer. Mr. Ha, well, we don't actually have a physical form of the dimension book, so it is an electronic version. Uh, the MTC will tell us about the quantity of materials as well as the number of workers involved in the dimension book. It is electronic. Well, it is electronic, so it will be convenient as far as submission is concerned. So how come the contractors are late in the submission? Mr. Ha, thank you, Chair. For contractors, as the members have said, they have to submit such information before they get the payment. We will check the information before making the payment. So there's an incentive for the contractor to submit the dimension book ASAP. However, what happens is that contractors uh having delays in the submission. Generally, it is because upon completion of the works order, they may have to um check certain information onsite. And that means that the school authority will be involved. And then they may need certification of certain materials used. Now, we are using private money, we have to be vigorous in our checking. So the contractors may have to come up with certain accreditation or certification, and it takes time for them to get the information. And that may explain partly why there is a delay. Now, upon completion of a works order, the contractor will um report completion of works in our computer system. First of all, the technical um consultant has to be there on the site to check the compression. As a result of the pandemic, the consultants may not be able to arrive at the scene instantly um to check the compression. Um, and before the consultant can finish that step, the MTC would not be able to submit the dimension book. This is basically what happened. Ms. Lung, if it is not a full question, then I'll have to give the floor to Mr. Emin Wong. It's a follow-up and also my last point here. Again, as a result of my background, I must say that as it has been mentioned, contractors have the incentive to complete the work ASAP. But then when it comes to contract management, I know there is this arrangement, there is interim payments. I'm not too clear about this arrangement. Would it be because interim payment has been collected? And it may very well be eighty-five percent of the total value of the contract. And therefore, the contractor hasn't got a very strong incentive to submit the dimension book early. But then that's not my question. My question is, please
please take a look of page eighteen of the Chinese version. Page twenty-three of the English version, paragraph two point one five C. Mention is made about the clawbacks. There is payment has been made, but then the money is clawed back because this dimension book has not been submitted. Now, it is said that in seven cases, in other words seventy percent, the clawbacks and the releases of payment clawback were made on the same day, rendering the clawbacks meaningless. So I want to know how come that this happened? So you clawed back on a specific day and then you've released the inform- uh the you've released the payment on the same day? Or you've released the payment and then you'll clawback on the same day afterwards?
Mr. Ha, thank you. I would like to answer the member's first question. The contractors do have the incentive to submit the dimension books as soon as possible. Because the contractors are entitled to demand the payment according to the progress of their works. But if the dimension books are not submitted within the ninety days as required, then the uh computer system will issue a notification on the uh clawback of the amount. And this is connected with the case mentioned as the uh mentioned by the member. Since the dimension books were not submitted, we needed to clawback the payment. But before that happened, the dimension books were submitted. Then the computer system alerted us that the dimension books have been submitted. And we were uh notified to, or we were reminded to release the payment back to the contractors. However, since these instructions need to be input by hand, so the sequence may go wrong. There is an instructions to clawback the payment and one to refund the payment. There may be a mistake in the uh sequence of instructions. There may be individual cases and isolated incidents, and we have refilled the mechanism to ensure that this do not happen again. Ms. Lu, well, Mr. Ha said that you have refilled the mechanism to ensure that the same mistake will not be uh committed again. Can you tell us what you, what you have actually done? Because this situation just sounds impossible, Mr. Ha. As I said, the reason for this mistake is because these financial instructions need to be input by hand, manually or rather. So our colleagues may have entered the second instruction first without verifying the dates. So in enhancing our current procedures, colleagues are reminded to check the dates of these instructions. This can ensure that the same mistake will not be committed again. Thank you, Chair. That's all from me for this part. Next, Mr. Emin Wong.
Thank you. Paragraph two point six A. It is said that the E D B had not promulgated guidelines on when T A A should be completed after the completion of works. And so uh many T A A's were conducted uh after the works have been completed for a long period of time. So I wonder if the relevant guidelines on T A A have been promulgated. Secretary? Well, in paragraph two point eighteen D, it is mentioned that the E D B would prepare guidelines on the timeliness on completing T A A's. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Wong?
Well, as at this moment, has, have the guidelines been promulgated? Secretary?
No, uh the guidelines are being formulated.
Thank you. On paragraph two point six A one, I wonder what the benchmarks are? Because the date of selecting the works order for T A A's range from one to one thousand one hundred and twelve. I wonder why uh they can only be conducted after four years?
Secretary? I believe that the problem of computer system, as mentioned before, is a factor at play here. Because the contractors did not verify the work orders in the computer system. That is why the E D B could not conduct the proper selection required. And sometimes the contractors did not submit information on materials. And we could not review the relevant information. That is why the uh contractors could not arrange for timely inspection of completed works, as Mr. Ha said. In the computer system, we are going to enhance the uh computer system so that within ninety days of works completion, we need to verify the uh completion date on the works orders. This is what we have done after recommendations were made by the Audit Commission.
Mr. Wong?
Well, I understand now. So that means if the contractors fail to submit this information, they may not be able to receive the payment. But in the past, for these uh consultants, they failed to follow up, to conduct follow-up actions for over one thousand days. So I wonder if they have any consequences? Would there be uh retention money withheld from them, or would there be other consequences? Otherwise, no matter how sophisticated your computer system is, it will be useless.
Secretary? I'll take this question first and I'll invite my colleagues to supplement. If contractors fail to perform up to standard, then we will this will leave a record uh in their performance. And this will be published on the Development Bureau's website. This will affect their prospect for future tendering exercise uh in, for the government. Permanent Secretary?
Well, we have set out deadlines for contractors. If they cannot complete the necessary task by the deadline, they could not receive the final payment for the works. This is already an incentive on its own. If we have identified any delays, we notified or issued notifications to these consultants. We publish a quarterly reports, and these notifications will be included in the reports. And for, as for the performance reports mentioned by the secretary, the details will be uploaded to the Development Bureau's database on its website. So in the future, during procurement exercises, the Development Bureau will review their performance ratings. And it is uh part of the reference for the tender exercise in the future. Mr. Wong? Two point six B two. I'm sure that it is not an isolated incident, or some works orders have not been responded to. The responses for the twenty work, uh twenty-nine works order were overdue for three to two hundred and seventy-five days. I wonder how many of them are still outstanding and pending responses? Because you can certainly track them on the system. Chair, on the work orders mentioned in the report, regarding the twenty-nine works orders, we have received all of the responses. As for any outstanding work orders, I'll invite Mr. Ha to take this question. Thank you. But for the outstanding responses for works orders, we have not been checking the exact number per se, because this is a continuous flow. Every day, the number is different. So we have not been uh keeping an eye on the level. Mr. Wong?
Well, then, that is not acceptable, because you have a system in place to prevent this from happening. Of course, I understand that you may not be able to give us the number offhand. But let me put it this way, how can you prevent uh this situation from happening again?
Secretary, I'll invite Mr. Ha to take this question. Thank you, Chair.
Well, after we have identified and issued, we asked the contractors to follow up on the issues. According to the requirements, they have to respond within fourteen days. However, there may be outstanding responses on the follow-up actions. We have been in touch with them on different levels. We have regular meetings with their management, et cetera. For cases with extensive delays, this record will be reflected in the assessment report of contractors. And in the coming days, we will have some updates in the computer system. Our goal is that before the fourteen-day deadline is up, notifications will be issued to the contractors, uh to the cons- consultants to remind them of the approaching deadline. If they still fail to submit the responses after the deadline, we will notify their management. This is something that we will do in the future in the hopes of preventing or uh decreasing the number of cases.
Two point one five D.
I wonder how this can happen? The release of clawback was made before the interim payments had actually been clawed back. What actually happened then?
Secretary? Well, actually, just then, Mr. Lu asked about this as well, and Mr. Ha has made a response. This involves a mistake that happened during the manual handling of financial instructions. We have identified this problem, and this will not happen again. Thank you. Mr. Wong?
The point of us asking question is to enhance the overall system to prevent the uh problem from happening again. We also need to look at why it happened. Although this isolated incident has been handled, we have to think about what other questions have yet to be identified. Yes, you said that this will not happen in the future, but for past cases, have you rectified all of the problems? Secretary or Permanent Secretary?
For the problems that we are aware of, of course, we have rectified them. As the secretary said, these are isolated incidents. There may be some inappropriate uh procedures done in terms of manual handling of instructions. We have updated the uh procedures and guidelines, and we will step up our training. Mr. Emin Wong? Two point eighteen A. Some of the works were delayed because we have a shortage of manpower demanding physical uh for, we have a shortage of manual labor.
Well, we understand that this is a problem around the world, so we can't just always blame it on manpower shortage. How are we going to solve this problem?
Secretary? Two point eighteen A refers to the situation during the pandemic in the audit cycle. At the time, there was a substantial shortage of manual labor. At the time, uh many people were infected uh by COVID nineteen, and we had to, we had work at home arrangement in place, work from home arrangement in place. There were other, we, we have uh procedures or arrangements in place to tackle this problem. Perhaps I'll invite Mr. Ha to tell us more about this.
Mr. Ha, thank you, Chair. If I may add to the secretary's reply concerning paragraph two point one H A. Well, um it is said that there was a substantial shortage of manpower labor for maintenance works at that time. It is all because that uh at that time, the epidemic situation was serious. And then um from the contractor, well, contractors lacked manpower, and so there were delays in carrying out the work. And then for our own staff responsible for carrying out the orders, uh some of them got infected and they had to take sick leave. So it's a matter of covering the entire uh workflow currently for the works orders on hand for contractors and consultants, for them to meet our manpower um demand. Uh I think they are able to cope with that. You are saying that there was manpower shortage during the pandemic. Now, with the pandemic um over, you think that the manpower levels are fine? Yes, we believe that we're able to deliver in time. Chair, maybe Mr. Wong is talking about the manpower supply in the construction industry. Well, we act in accordance with the guidelines of the um whatever uh bureaus, and we have the C I C T S, that is, we try to get trainees um um being specified in the contracts so as to address the problem of manpower shortage. I'm not just interested in manpower shortage for the construction industry. You had it uh during the pandemic. I think all the more we should be worried. Because for school premises, we are talking about safety as well. So I'm glad to hear from Mr. Ha that for the time being, he thought that uh they could cope with the demand. So I must say that I'm glad to get that answer from him. For the construction industry, it is a fact that there's a manpower shortage. I don't think the Education Bureau alone can address the problem. Please liaise closely with the Labor and Welfare Bureau. It is about safety, it is about uh the safety of school children. Finally, two point nineteen A. It is said that the E D B has adopted measures to address the low response rate. So um other than uploading the information on the different bureaus' websites, I want to know what other measures have been adopted. Of course, for that move, uh that would affect the chance of getting a tender or getting a contract awarded. Secretary, we have updated our computer system, and then consultants will be punished. And then um we have also got other channels for schools to reflect their opinions. Say, for example, by way of emails. For the upgrading of our computer system, it means that the submission of these customer satisfaction survey questionnaires can be done electronically. That's more facilitating. The computer system has been changed, right? Yes. Mr. Wong, any other questions? No. Next, Ms. Yung.
Thank you, Chair. Today, we're focusing on two point three and two point one five in part two. That is the um delays, notifications, as well as the dimension books. Uh I think today the E D B has been focusing on manpower. That is um manually checking the information, getting notifications, et cetera. Well, in fact, I know there is a computer system linking the um contractors, consultants, and the E D B. The audit has discovered the issues. There's a need to carry out improvements. I want to know whether your computer system will be given a further enhancement. Say, for example, um using graphics to remind your colleagues to check the works orders, whether there has been a response and whether you need to have a follow-up. Uh I think you need to be notified before you can carry out the work. You can't blame everything.
Uh I think you need to be notified before you can carry out the work. You can't blame everything on the contractors. You say that they have done certain thing you don't know, and so there's a time lag. I don't think there should be a time lag, and there wasn't a time lag. It must be a matter of oversight. There must be uh some human errors. So what can be done to make sure that all the deadlines are being met in a very sort of conscientious way? Now, for the contractors, it is said that they have delays. You don't know that they have delays, and you haven't reminded them, and then the matters are allowed to drop or forgotten. Then in some cases, the delay, the delay has been as much as a few years. I just wonder if your system can have a feature to help them. For the Director of Audit and for the E D B, both of you have come up with replies, but you haven't told us as to whether your system will be further enhanced to make sure that you can supervise the contractors and consultants so that you can identify the poor performers. I want to know if the computer system will issue warning letters automatically. Everybody is busy. I think the bureau has also got manpower difficult uh shortages. So I wonder if the computer system itself can help you so as to avoid having a recurrence. Let me get my second question as well. For the works orders, I think the picture is fluid. Every month, C S Cs must be carried out, and then for each sub-region, um the number of C S Cs would be different. And that's why we have got only seventy percent or ninety percent of those checked. For others, um it the number of cases checked were were different, like sixty percent, sixty-three percent. Well, as it as Mister Ha has said, you don't know how many should be checked and how many need not be checked. The figures are all very fluid. Now, it seems that the audit is saying that you have got a specified number. Rather, the way I see is that uh the number is not fixed. So there is a difference in the understanding between the two of you. Now, from your replies, you say that, you said that depending on the nature of the works orders, you would decide whether there's a need for C S C. So do I understand it correctly? There is uh whether you're not able to specify the number of uh works orders to be checked and whether that can be sort of set out in these sort of guidelines. Well, it is already twelve fifty-three, so I will extend the hearing by fifteen minutes. So, Secretary, regarding the first question, just now the member talked about the delay of a few years. We've already explained the matter. Uh it was all because the wrong form was used. And that explains the delay. As to the upgrading or updating of the computer system, we have already got a function of issuing email reminders automatically. Uh for the rest, Mister Ha, we want to supplement. As to the works orders, uh well, the nature, the complexity differs across the regions. So we may not be able to come up with a single guideline. There will be operational difficulties. I'll just check with Mister Ha as to whether he has got any other sort of uh explanation. Mister Ha, regarding the members' questions, for paragraph two point two of the auditor's report, it is said that we have the guidelines on spot checks. The idea is such that uh the works orders are underway, and then from time to time, we get commencement of works orders and then completion of works orders. Well, we check the status. When it is completed, then we carry out the Q A A, uh the T A A. And then for those not yet completed, for those that are important of a longer duration of a larger value, then we'll carry out a C S C comprehensive site check. Um the coverage is different. As to how we carry out this election, for works orders completed, our computer system will tell us the number of works orders completed. Uh it is an automatic message telling us that we can check them because they have all been completed. We want to check the quality of such completed works orders. For C S Cs, as I have said, we're interested in the uncompleted works. We want to choose those of longer duration, of a larger value, of a greater importance. So the natures with the processes are different. But still, we have got guidelines to help uh colleagues to carry out the work. For the guidelines, first of all, um for those completed, you're interested in the quality. Would it be ten percent or twenty percent? Say, I've got twenty cases for the first part, thirty cases for the second part. Does it mean that for the twenty cases, you're bound to pick a certain percentage or a certain number? And the same is true for the second part, Mister Ha. Well, for T eight A's for completed works orders, the computer will randomly select thirty percent on a bi-weekly basis uh for our colleagues to carry out the T A A, and we will just follow the instructions. For the C S Cs, according to our guidelines, the rule is that every month for each sub-region, we need to select thirty cases. That's about the um building services. For builders' works, uh there are seven sub-regions. The seventh sub-region has a fewer number of schools. So the target number of cases checked is lower, twenty. Twenty of thirty are work targets for us. Our own colleagues will carry out the selection themselves. And every month, when we talk about paragraph two point one H A, during the pandemic, sometimes we were not able to um work to the target. We might not have thirty cases, but only covered twenty-four, twenty-eight. When the pandemic uh modified, uh we tried to increase the workload, tried to catch up. In individual months, the target might have been thirty, but the actual uh caseload was as much or as many as forty-nine. Well, for the delays, please go to table five. This is mainly about January twenty-one to September twenty-two. Well, the bureau is saying that as a result of the pandemic, they are not able to meet the target dates. I want to confirm with you whether that's your explanation. It is not a matter of having no notification, it's not a matter of being wrong in the number of cases covered. It's all because of pandemic, right? Then for the uh failure to submit the dimension books, I find it difficult to understand this point. A contractor might have given you the information, but you haven't updated the record. I want to know whether it is a matter of automatic updating or whether you need manual inputting of the information. There was only one case. Yes, I appreciate that it's an isolated case. But still, from the isolated case, I want to know whether it is um it can be improved by addressing some uh sort of features in the system so that we don't have such odd cases. So can you address the workflow so as to avoid having such lengthy delays? Uh Bureau, Mister Ha can repeat the answer already given. Mister Ha, Mister, Miss Yong referred to that case. It's an isolated case. We've only got one such case. Uh the computer system was fine for that case. Um it's a real-time updating as far as our computer system is concerned. If a contractor fails to submit the dimension book before the deadline, uh then there will be automatic notification. That is, we need to clawback the payment made. After the contractor has submitted the dimension book, then the system will have real-time updating, telling us that the book has been submitted. So all that they have to do is to submit the book, and then the commuter knows that it has been submitted. And then the clawback payment can be released. Just now, we talked about the mistake. It's a human mistake. It got nothing to do with the system. So I'm interested in that particular procedure. You said that before the interim payment, I think you got it the other way around. The book wasn't submitted, and you didn't clawback. But then for the others, payments were only clawed back a long time afterwards. The clawbacks were made long after the due date for dimension book submission. So how are you going to address this point? Well, um as to whether the contractor has submitted this dimension book, um this will be updated in real time. And in fact, we get reminders from the computer system as well. For two point one five, that's about payments, whether it is clawing back or releasing the payments. Well, our bank payment accounts are not automatically linked with those of the contractors. It has to be manually instructed so that we get the payments from the contractor or we release the payment to the contractors. Whether we are talking about the that particular case or the delays in two point one five A is because the computer tells us to clawback the uh payment. But then uh there was a slight delay when it comes to the human processing. Uh we have reminded our colleagues to be more vigorous in that regard. Miss Lung? Uh Miss Yong, let me call your name before you start to ask questions. I think the secretary would like to give a reply. Yes, Secretary? Well, for the contractor's delay in submitting this dimension book, well, as far as our internal procedures are concerned, maybe the P S can give an overall reply.
Permanent Secretary, I would like to address the question on two points. First, on works supervision. We have a real-time system in place to update the status of dimension books. As for the payment and clawback, where we have our own division of labor for financial matters or release of payments, they are handled by a separate team of colleagues. We want to update the guidelines and enhance the procedures so that colleagues of different teams can have the most updated information. We hope that we can make more accurate decision when it comes to clawbacks and releases of payment. That's my first point. Second, I thank Miss Yong for mentioning the system update. We want to progress with the times. We want to update the system to eliminate uh manual procedures. As Mister Ha said, if we are aware of the deadlines in advance, then notifications can be issued to remind all parties of the deadline. And there can be uh reminders sent just before the deadline and after the la- deadline so that follow-up actions can be taken. It is mentioned in the paper that the uh satisfaction survey, et cetera, we are working on enhancing the computer system to enhance efficiency. Miss Yong? Well, perhaps the computer system can connect the banks and your accounting teams, et cetera. They want to eliminate uh manual operations so that we can have a more streamlined uh work process. I hope that this can be of help to you, and this can alleviate your burden in terms of manpower. So that's all from me. Thank you, Chair. Mister Lung? My last question. Just then, in the administration's reply to Miss Yong, well, on page twenty of the Chinese version, two point one eight, B, C, and F. Here, it is mentioned in all three items that the E D B will continue to explore other measures. It is mentioned in item F as well. So from what the P S has said, you have done the exploration, right, of other measures? You have put in place measures to prevent these problems from happening again. I just would like a confirmation. Permanent Secretary? That is correct. We have completed some of the updates and others are ongoing. Mister Lung? Can you tell us what measures are completed and what are ongoing? Permanent Secretary? Regarding item B, we have been exploring other measures through various aspects. This is an ongoing process. For loopholes that we are aware of, we have plugged them already. We will continue to look at what other additional measures may help. For item D, on preparing guidelines, we are currently doing that. It is still ongoing. For item F and item G, we have completed the update on work procedures to ensure that different teams are aware of the overall work procedures, and they are ongoing. We will also step up training as well. Would you have a timetable in place so that by a specific date, you will would will have completed all the updates? Permanent Secretary? Yes, we do have timetables in place. We hand in progress reports regarding the audit report. So uh updates will be given. Mister Lung? I hope that the administration can provide us with a timetable. The responsibility of this committee is to look at the value for money aspect of things. I understand that in two point eighteen A, that at the time, the pandemic played a role in the overall situation. But in the report, I see a lot of uh preparation or exploration. I hope that by a certain time, you would have completed all these studies and you have put in place actual measures. Do you need a response or was it just a comment? All right. Mister Emin Wong? Well, I have some follow-up regarding Miss Yong's question. Just then, Miss Ha said that some colleagues may uh have certain delays when it comes to handling manual instructions. Does that contribute to paragraph two point thirteen? That the dimension books were submitted with a delay of six hundred and sixty-one days? I understand that notifications will be sent before the deadline and after the deadline. But before this system was put in place, what mechanism was there? Yes, a system is in place, but we need to have people implement the system. You said that you have had, uh you have provided training for your staff. I wonder if you have other measures in place to tie in with this measure, Mister Ha. Thank you, Chair. I would like to make some clarifications. When I answer Miss Yong's question, we were referring to two point fifteen A, that is the clawback arrangements. So after a notification was sent by the computer system, we need to have our staff enter manual instructions. But what Mister Wong is referring to is the delay of six hundred and sixty-one days. That is the delay in the submission of dimension books by contractors.
As I said. The contractors have financial incentive to submit the dimension books as soon as possible. But due to various reasons, there may be delays. We will, of course, first remind them to submit their dimension books and second. Find out if there are any measures that can help them streamline the submission of dimension books. Before they can submit the dimension books, they may need to actually go to the site to verify the materials used. And certain veri- verifications may need to be made. They do have financial incentive to verify the works. Because the consultants will only receive payments after the works have been verified. But I would like to clarify that on the submission of dimension books. Manpower or manual instructions from E D B colleagues were not involved.
Mister Wong. Well, if the superficial responsibility does not lie with the E D B, then who is responsible? Of course, I understand that they have, the contractors have econ- uh financial incentives to submit their dimension books. But perhaps with that. But perhaps since ninety percent of the payment has been made to the contractors already. The remaining ten percent does not serve as a big incent- as a big enough incentive for them to hand in the necessary information. From the government's perspective, I'm not sure. Uh which department is responsible, perhaps not the E B D, but they do have the responsibility to ensure that all information is submitted. Will you have a mechanism in place to prevent this from happening? Will you put them on a blacklist or to clawback the payment, et cetera? Permanent Secretary. If the contractors fail to submit the dimension books on time as stipulated in the contract. Then we will clawback the payment made to them. There is already a penalty mechanism in place. Have you implemented the penalty for this case, six hundred and sixty days?
Yes, we did. So we are talking about. Implementing prevention measures and penalties as well. We have regular meetings with contractors and consultants. We remind them the importance of time limits. And in different systems on various levels, we issue notifications. Let's say ninety days before the dead. Uh let's say there are ninety days for them to submit certain information, perhaps you can issue notifications sooner. If they could not submit submit them on time, they have, they need to have justification. We need to have communication with the contractors and consultants. With the enhancement of our system, we can see how we can prevent this from happening. And of course, penalties will need to be in place as well. Well, no more questions from me.
Well, I have a question, but because of the time limit, I'll extend the meeting further by another fifteen minutes. Any objection? No, well, then I will extend the meeting by fifteen minutes. In two point nine, two point one nine being. Schools need to. Give ratings to the uh performance of contractors. So rating lower than five is unsatisfactory ratings, right? In twenty twenty. One September to November, all of the one hundred and eighty-three schools, twenty-five of the schools gave unsatisfactory ratings. And seven of these schools, that is twenty-eight percent. There was no documentary evidence showing that the term consultants had visited them or taken follow-up actions. Because if they are given unsatisfactory ratings, follow-up actions need to be. There needs to be follow-up action. So that means fourteen percent of the schools gave unsatisfactory ratings. I wonder why the the proportion is so high. As for the seven schools. No follow-up actions were taken. Did you follow up on what happened there, Secretary?
Let me talk about the works at the schools. Of course, uh it may cover different elements. Um just like in terms of the renovate, say, for example, the design and development ship, et cetera. Um it may not be sort of up to the expectation. So for the fourteen percent figure, it shows that there is um dissatisfaction and we need to follow this up. At the same time, I want to say that some schools have written uh letters of appreciation to us. So all in all, in the majority of the cases, the quality of the works carried out uh is good. Now, the chair would like to know about our follow-up work if it is found to be unsatisfactory. Mister Ha, please. Let me add two points. Twenty-five schools, in other words, fourteen percent of them. Have rated unsatisfactory in relation to certain items in the works orders. I personally went through the replies. Well, it is a matter of the um questionnaires. Um say, for example, we talk about uh overall uh impressions like um whether they're happy with the communication with the uh workpeople. And then. We would also like to know whether the contractors are friendly. That is also one of the questions asked. In this particular paragraph, it is said that some schools may not be happy about certain elements. Um. Most of the time, schools are not happy with, say, for example, the communication between uh the schools and the contractors. They may not be timely enough, or say, for example, a particular um sort of um. Or telephone calls have not been made in advance in relation to changes in the scheduled task. For the seven schools that um men- that was mentioned in the paragraph. Uh well, in fact, all of them have been followed up. So what happened was that um there was a follow-up and eventually schools were happy with the final outcome. But we haven't got information to say when that was done. Uh say, for example, water seppage at the toilet. Schools may find that it is still not yet um entirely resolved. So during the surveys, um it may be said that um the toilet work hasn't been satisfactory carried out. And then the consultant and contractor would follow that up, but that that was not documented. For the twenty-eight percent outstanding. Uh please make sure that the gap will be filled because the director of audit has made it clear. That is, for auditors, they would only look at what is documented. Anything supplemented verbally would not count. So in future, please make sure that you bear this point in mind. Hundred eighty-three schools, twenty-five of them have given unsatisfactory ratings. Being late or poor communication, et cetera, are among the items ranked unsatisfactory. I think for the school management, I think they're educated people. When they write comments, I'm sure they're being professional. If they are to give an unsatisfactory rating. Um I think it is an informed decision. The secretary talked about letters of appreciation, thanking the consultants and contractors for performing well in particular elements. Now, in a private company, if fourteen percent of the clients are unhappy and have given unsatisfactory ratings. I think this company will find it difficult to expand or to prosper. Now, schools are your stakeholders. That many schools say that they are not happy. Then contractors and consultants involved should be sort of um checked for their inadequacies. In future, when they want to take part in our tender exercises. Um I think you need to be careful, otherwise it's not fair to the stakeholders, that is, the schools. No more questions from members, director of audit, any other comments? No, then we call it a day at this moment, so we're finished with part two. Next time, we will um meet on Tuesday, the twenty-third of May at ten o'clock. And we will uh start with part three on that day. That would be the second hearing, so I would like to thank everybody for your attendance, thank you.